Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. As always, we begin our city council meeting with a prayer and a pledge. For those that would like to join in the prayer, please bow your heads with me. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity that this city council has to serve the citizens of Saginaw. We ask you to be with us as we deliberate, Lord, the business before us. We ask you to be with all our citizens, be with our -- all our workers, our public safety, but be with them, keep them safe, and be with us tonight as we go about doing the city's business. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Protem Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Here.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Humphries.
Here.
Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, do you have some announcements for us?
I do, Mayor, thank you. I'd like everyone to be aware that a revised agenda has been distributed, revision on the adds a consent agenda item number 12, and that's regarding an MDOT agreement for the installation of Riverfront Gateway signs. And the election day is tomorrow, November 6th. Polling locations are open at 7:00 a.m. through 8:00 p.m. A high voter turnout is expected, and your patience is appreciated. City Hall will be closed Monday, November 12th for Veterans Day, and on Thursday and Friday, November 22nd and 23rd, for the Thanksgiving holiday. And the Thanksgiving holiday will cause a one-day delay in the residential collection of trash for those whose regular collection day is Thursday and Friday. Please place your trash out one day later for even on Election Day. The city's waste convenience station is open the second Saturday of the month. City residents can dispose of items such as building materials, recycling for glass, plastic, and paper. The next service day is this Saturday, November 10th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. The city's yard waste collection ends on November 30th. Remember that leaves cannot be raked into the street or onto the curbs. And city council's next regular meeting will be held on Monday, November 26th, at 6:30 p.m.
Okay. Thank you, and just a reminder to the audience, during the council meeting, remain quiet and refrain from speaking. And also, this is a great time to check your phones, to make sure your phones are turned down or silenced so they do not interrupt the council meeting in action. Madam Clerk?
Now we are at public input, and we do have one this evening.
Okay, let me go through the public input.
Yes, thank you.
Because I forgot the other one. We welcome your thoughts and input, hearing from our citizens. We represent this, it's very important to us, so we ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, introduce yourself and state your home address. Let us know if you will be speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by our clerk. We ask that you be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present and to the citizens watching SGTV and to the council so that we can give consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to the city staff. Madam Clerk?
Our speaker tonight is Heather Thompson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Heather.
Thank you for allowing me to talk to you. My name is Heather Thompson, and I am from Saginaw Covenant Academy, which is just going in down the road at 508 South Washington. I wanted this opportunity to give you an update on the school. Many of you have been involved through this process in one way or the other over the last couple of years as we were trying to find a building and coming into Saginaw, and I wanted to give you a great update that we actually are opening next Monday, November 12th. The school opened at 508 South Washington, which is the old Brown Funeral Home, right next to 7-Eleven. We have one more inspection to go through tomorrow, and we look really good to clear that inspection, and everything else has went into the building, and we are scheduled to start with about 15 to 20 students next Monday, and we'll grow from there. We have staff already onboard, all of our PDs are up to date, and we are ready to start. So we're really excited about finally finding a home in Saginaw and being able to serve the students of not only the city of Saginaw but Saginaw County themselves.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, next order of business is remarks of council.
And councilmembers, to remind you that you also have a three-minute limit, and we begin with Councilwoman Brenda Moore.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank Ms. Heather for keeping us updated. On Saturday, I'm sorry, a friendly reminder, on the 16th is light up the city. On the 17th, councilmembers, I need $10. No, I don't need it like that. We're giving candy, we're in the flood, we're in the parade, so we need to have candy. I've already started purchasing candy already. I'd just like to do a shout-out to Ms. Diane Floyd, who has developed -- don't give me a Michael -- who has developed the flow for us for this year, so we're looking -- we're really gonna be pretty at the parade this year. So on the 17th, it will be the Pride Parade, and your city council representatives will be riding a float, so if you're doing nothing else, please come out. Thank you so much.
Councilman Clark?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I'm gonna discover today is that tomorrow, being Election Day, Stars, I want to be a reminder for everybody, Stars will be giving free rides to everyone all day for any reason. So if you need to get to the polls, there's no excuse. If you don't have a ride, you got the Stars. Stars will give you that ride, so you can call them or you can get there through the regular Stars pickup points, and no excuse, please vote tomorrow. Thank you, that's all.
And Councilwoman Annie Bench?
Thank you. Yes, everyone vote tomorrow. If you're disillusioned, if you're happy, it doesn't matter, just go and vote. I want to thank Ms. Thompson for being here tonight. Congratulations on the opening, and best of luck to you guys. On a sadder note, I do want to offer my condolences to the family of Howard Sharper. I know that he's been around for a long time and very well-known in the community, and most recently spent much of his time is derived by photography and highlighting all of the beautiful things that are here in Saginaw that already exist that we often overlook and don't appreciate, and he was a very special person to a lot of us, and I know I first met him when I got elected, and he informed me that I was his councilperson. I probably said that to everyone, but the way he said it made me feel like I really had to live up to that. And he's gonna be missed, and I hope that we can find some way here at the city to recognize him, but I just want his family to know that his contributions to our city have not been forgotten, nor will they be, so thank you.
Okay. Councilman Clint Bryant?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see a nice, almost full chamber tonight. I don't have too much to report, I just wanted to thank the neighborhood associations for all their work in keeping Saginaw four years, four consecutive years arson-free. That was great. I'm not gonna lie and tell you that I'm not exhausted, because we went till 12:00 a.m. on both nights, but it was great. The first night, we got a chance to go over in some areas. I haven't been in in a very long time, but it was very good. It was a beautiful night of seeing our community come together. Sometimes people want to think of a narrative that will be displayed in the media, but that's not the narrative of our community. We love this community, we want to keep it going forward, and it was a pleasure to join with those neighbors at three different locations across the city as they came together to keep us four years' fire free. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jamie Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I wanted to mention also, to really repeat what Councilwoman Bench mentioned, that we're really sad to see Howard Sharper leave this community. He was very passionate, particularly about Wick's Park, and so in hopes of being able to create something that was worthy of his memory, some conversations between his family and the Saginaw County Parks and Rec Department, we were able to organize a bench with a plaque with the likeness of Mr. Sharper to be installed at Wick's Park facing the Saginaw River. And so for folks that are interested in donating to that cause, the Saginaw Community Foundation has generously offered to hold that money, so if you're interested, go ahead and send your donations there. Just put in the memo line of your check or mention over the phone that it's for the Howard Sharper Memorial, and the money will be checked for that. We really just aim to create something that is fit for a man who works so hard to showcase the beauty of that particular location, and so I hope that we'll all consider that. And then also, I just wanted to mention, congratulations to John Vowell on his love in Saginaw event yesterday in Borchard Park. It was a really wonderful bit of music and just a pause in the busy election season, and I was really pleased to have been invited. So most of all, please, just vote, vote, please, and thank you.
Councilman John Humphries?
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for appearing tonight. Heather, I want to say I cannot tell you how good the news is to hear that Saginaw Covenant Academy is opening. I'm going to take a little bit of my time and be a commercial, because two things that didn't get, I think, said. One, the phone number is 989-596-1100. If you are a student or you have a student in your family that needs something like Covenant Academy, give that number a call. Alternatively, it's www.scovenantacademy.org. I've had the pleasure of working with the Covenant Academy people for a couple of years now. I've never met a finer bunch, a more dedicated bunch, a more caring and loving and nurturing and supportive bunch, so give it a shot, please. And with that, I'll pass.
Okay. Councilman Michael Balls?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I don't have many comments myself tonight, but I would like to encourage everybody to get out and vote. Probably the people that's looking at this program tonight are probably the ones that do get out and vote. Take your neighbors or knock on the doors and tell them to go vote, too. Every year, every election year, you hear somebody say this is the most important election that we will have in our lifetime, and I must admit that I really feel that way this year. So everybody, please get out and vote, cast your ballot for the very people you think would do a good job. Something I haven't mentioned in a while, the Big Brothers and Sisters program, we still need mentors in the city of Saginaw, and I'm encouraging everybody here, you in the city council. We had one young man there, and I think he went on to St. Charles to be the city manager there, I think, if I'm not mistaken, or mayor. Anyway, I come to find out, he's a big brother. He wasn't a big brother, he left here, but he is a big brother now, so we have a lot of people trying to encourage the youth here in this city. It doesn't take a lot, just a little guidance to show kids the right thing to do. Everybody knows the situation in Saginaw with jobs, and sometimes we have some people that think there's easier, softer way to earn money, and then they come to find out that it's not easier, softer way to earn that money by doing those things, and that thing, you know, they leave kids at home with no fathers. And none of those kids are the ones that go wayward and cause problems in our community and end up calling Saginaw names that we don't like. So I would encourage everybody here to give a bow to the Big Brothers and Sisters program because it does work. Thank you.
Councilman John Millen?
Thank you, Mayor Browning. Just a couple of short comments. We're coming to the end of construction season here in Saginaw. I just wanted to thank the city staff and all our workers. We've had a number of projects completed or just about to complete this year. I'm just gonna mention one. There is new street lighting at the Center Street Bridge, and that's a product of a lot of hard work and cooperation among city departments. And I just wanted, before we get to them, to mention, in the broadest sense, the two presentations we're gonna have under the manager's report tonight are good examples of the kind of partnerships with other groups that are moving Saginaw forward. They focus on a project, they get it funded, they work with city staff, and they make it work. So that's the kind of thing that keeps us getting better, and that's all for tonight.
Councilwoman Brenda Moore? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna let you pass. Here's your drink, so you get to know that I have a drink there for you, so anyway. Anyway, so we were going right down the line so good, too. Well, welcome, and thank you for being here tonight, and for -- Heather, thank you very much for your presentation, and we look forward to a lot of good things, so many good things happening for our community. And so with that, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
We have the reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager, where else, what you have for us?
Good evening. So we have a few presentations tonight, and we have those go first since they're from outside groups. The Riverfront Saginaw Project is something that I think started, put together by Mike Hanley, a city council member, but it involves a pretty big group now, and there's an exciting project that subcommittee of that group has put together and will be started soon, so I wanted to give them a few minutes under management update to present their idea, and eventually you will be approving these as gifts to the city. So with that, I'll ask Mike Hanley and Kevin Schultz and Jeff Wood to come up and present on the Riverfront Saginaw Gateway signs.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and good evening.
Evening, Mike.
I would like to humbly begin this evening by thanking you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilman Humphries for your service to the city of Saginaw. As I understand it, this will be your final meeting on this august body, and you've done a fine, fine job, both of you, and as are you all. I did come tonight to talk about the Riverfront Saginaw group very briefly, and then I'm gonna turn things over to Kevin and Jeff to talk about a special project, but this riverfront project came up about five years ago at the beginning or at the conclusion of a Visitors and Convention Bureau's meeting, when Goose Goslin, the president of the Saginaw Spirit, said, "We've gotta do something about the image of the center of Saginaw because I have a hard time getting people to come here to play and people to come here from Midland to see the games." And a tremendous amount has been done since then. We set out, after Craig made that statement, he and I, to build a group of people that could discuss how we could better describe the narrative of this part of Saginaw, which we are not renaming, we are simply giving a name to a part of the city of Saginaw that many people refer to the riverfront as that already. It's downtown, it's old town, it's the parks, it's the museums, it's the hospitals and everything in between where only good things happen. I'm joined also tonight by a member of that group, there are 30 of us now. Councilman, Mayor Protem Clark is a member, the city manager is a member, and Jamie McKenna from CMU Health is back here, she's a member as well. So it's been a very positive journey, there are other things you're gonna notice in the community. We have a Facebook page with almost 2,000 followers now. The city has assisted us in building a website, which I think sends a very positive message about the city. You'll be seeing that Riverfront logo on street signs in the near future. We understand the smokestack near the MCVI will be repainted with that logo as well. But tonight, Jeff and Kevin are here as members of the Leadership Saginaw Class of 2015 to announce and solicit your support for the city of Saginaw accepting a gift from that class in Riverfront Saginaw. I'm gonna turn it over to them now.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, council. We're the Class of Leadership 2015, and Jeff and I have been the instigators of a project of the whole class, and we brought that project to Riverfront Saginaw, and we asked them to guide us through the completion of it, and so we'd like to just share a couple of quick slides with you. We have identified five locations within the Riverfront District to have three of these gateway entry monument-style signs, and then a fourth sign, which will be a pole sign, and then a permanent banner for the north side of the Dowell Vent Center. So these are the monument-style signs, the gateway entry signs, that will be placed at -- and let me, this is the pole sign that will be one location where it didn't serve us well to have that monument-style sign for many variables. But here are the locations, and I apologize, I'm not an expert at Google Earth, so I had to incorporate some handwork as well today. But you can see, Sign 1 location is actually the Wirt Rivette property on just north of the Family Dollar, right across from Tim Horton's, as you're coming up the beautifully new paved Johnson Street area. That will be the monument-style sign on the Dowell Center on the north side. That exposure will be the permanent lit banner. All of these monuments will be lit as well. Sign number three location is on the northwest corner of South Washington and Rust, and that's on -- that's an MDOT right away, which Ms. London is preparing for that location for us. It's on that very corner of the Water Works, right across from the Children's Zoo, and that would be a monument-style sign. And then on the entrance to Ojibwe Island, which would be the northwest entry point there, that will be a monument-style sign. And then that pole sign that you saw the example of, that will be by the Huntington Bank building location on Grashit and Stevens. There's a triangular grass belt there, and the city has already treated that triangle to trim the tree up and for a beautiful placement of that pole sign. Those are the locations, and Jeff and I had worked diligently on raising $60,000 for this project, and our class members assisted as well. And John Eggers from Sign Image is our general sign contractor for the project, and as soon as we receive the proper approvals, we're ready to put things in the ground like yesterday. And Craig Goslin, who's been an advocate for this, we were hoping this was gonna be a late summer project, but our goal is that we'll have this beautiful Christmas season with these beautiful new entry signs.
Jeff, anything else?
You know, not too much. I think Kevin did an adequate job there describing what this project is, but you know, living across -- or living along the river there, this project here really hit home for me and loving the location and feel that this is just going to be a bit of a stepping stone for the further development that needs to be done along the river if we want to attract and retain any talent into the city of Saginaw here. So I hope that we can get your approval and make this generous gift to the city. Thank you.
Councilmembers, are there any questions? I mean, this is manager update, so do you have any questions, comments, anything?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to comment that this has been in the works for quite a while, and it's really an accomplishment to have it come to fruition and to see what you've accomplished in being able to not only raise the funds, but to get the plans in place and actually now, hopefully, as you say, get it done by Christmas time, to celebrate that we have a united riverfront, and we have a location that serves all the different districts, and it gives the Riverfront name to something that really we need to take advantage of, so I really want to thank you for all you've done.
So I just want clarification.
Go ahead.
So gentlemen, you're asking for us to give you our blessings, to give us something free. Am I understanding that? Did I say something wrong? So that's what I'm hearing, right? All you want us to do is agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to personally thank you guys for the work that you've done, and hopefully maybe we can start a competition with each class, and maybe they can do something great for the city like you guys have done, and I really commend you for doing such great work. Thank you very much.
Jamie?
As the Class of 2016, you've put us to shame. I feel a lot of pressure now that we should probably retroactively up the -- it's a wonderful gift. I know that it takes a lot of money to make, I mean, it takes a lot of time to raise this kind of money, and I'm just very thankful for this tremendous effort.
Well, I just want to say thank you as well, piggyback on everybody else, but there's a lot of engineering studies, design that goes into that placement, where is it gonna go? We've been talking on the Riverfront Development Commission for quite some time about that, so I appreciate all the work that you guys have done to bring this to fruition. We can't wait. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, can I say a final word?
A question I have.
Sure.
You were able to raise $60,000. Was that your goal, or you still need people to contribute?
No, we fully funded the project.
So you fully funded, and you are ready to go on that.
Yes, but we'll never turn away more money, Mayor.
That's right.
What happens is, when people see this, there's gonna be people saying, "Gosh, I wish I knew about this, I wish I could have contributed," and that is always a possibility, and maybe they contribute enough to cover for 16's kind of what she's talking about over here.
Well, we were asked by Mr. Carwatt about our future maintenance plan, and so we will regularly go to our alumni and ask to support that fund.
Thank you, that's good. Mr. Hanley?
It was Mayor Protem Clark made a very insightful statement. I was presenting on this to the Downtown Development Authority a couple of years ago, and typically, the river's been seen as a dividing line in the city of Saginaw, and it's about time that that stops, and the comment was from a member of the DDA that said, "Finally, we're using the riverfront to bring us together," and that's our collective aspiration.
Okay.
Real quickly, I don't remember you saying it, so these are all lighted signs. All will have electricity, so they'll be lit signs, they'll be -- you're maintaining them, we can't ask for a better gift. The one thing I would say is, if you can get more funds, there's places probably for more signs.
And more projects.
And more projects. Wonderful, guys, thank you very, very much, and to Riverfront Saginaw for all you've done to make it possible.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Welcome back anytime you have good news like that. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, and our second presentation is Steve Jonas from Saginaw Future is going to head up, and this is related to the Great Lakes Bay Region Talent Initiative, which was mentioned by Councilmember Forbes, I believe, at the last meeting, so we thought we would have Steve give an update on the project.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Browning, councilmembers, and thank you, city manager as well, for inviting us here tonight. Tom, did you come back to the office and say how you did mention it? And I said, "Hey, we'd be glad, we need to really get this word out, we're doing a last push," which we'll talk about what this all is in a second, but we welcome the opportunity to be here. So everybody knows, I think, today, that retaining and attracting talent's like our number-one issue. It's the number-one issue faced by all employers, it's across the board, and we thought, as an economic development agency, that we need to undertake an effort like this. I'll talk about funding, like Councilman Millen talked about, it takes a lot of partnerships and a lot of funding to get these things done, but the whole goal is meant to help our employers as well as retaining. We always say attracting, but we tell people it's just as important to retain our youth. So it's really targeted towards those that are currently in college, our upcoming graduates, those that are five, 10, and 15 years out, because those are our millennial group that everybody talks about, that we're trying to attract or retain in our area. So with the next slide, that is, we dubbed this the Great Lakes Bay Talent Initiative. The moniker, if you will, underneath there, the Explore Great Lakes Bay, Discover Your Opportunity, came out of, from students out at SVSU, Saginaw Valley State University, which I'll talk about in a minute with our partnership with them. But I thought just to start out, I know the councilmembers and manager know exactly who we are, Saginaw Future, but for the audience at home, members in the audience here, I thought I would just briefly take a second and talk about us. Saginaw Future is a nonprofit development agency, we've been around since 1992. We're the economic development agency for the entire county of Saginaw as well as the city of Saginaw. Thank you for your support, we couldn't be here without you. We have 224 private businesses that contribute, as well as 18 local units of government, but the city and county by far are our largest funders, so thanks again. We also receive grants from the Michigan Economic We also receive grants from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. That's the state's economic group. We have an office that helps companies bid on state, local, and federal contracts. Saginaw Future serves as the lead organization for something called Prosperity Region Five. I don't know if any of you recall, but the governor put 10 prosperity regions together in the state of Michigan. It's a group of counties. We are Region Five, and there has to be a convener or facilitator, so we are that for our region. We came up with a mission for our talent initiative. You can see the eight-county region that we cover, Aronak Bay, Clare, Isabelle, Gladwin, Grashit, Midland, and Saginaw. It's a very large area. And again, we're recruiting young professionals who are either currently here, those in college, or those in the region that are from the region but have left and would like to return home. Speaking of partnerships, and I'll go into a little bit more in depth a little bit later, but the MEDC is our biggest partner in that they are funding this initiative for the most part. We also have the Great Lakes Bay Region Five Partners. The eight-county region had to come together. We applied for a grant from the state of Michigan, and we all agreed that this was the most important for all of us. We are teaming up with SVSU Cardinal Solutions, which is a team out at Saginaw Valley, interd, I always screw up this word, interdisciplinary team of students and faculty that they bring together to help work on projects. We also are working with Amy Sell Talent, which I'll explain also in a minute. And the Eastern Michigan Council of Governments came in at the very end to provide us with a little funding. We will always take more funding when asked as well. We have three-quarters of the talent team here, myself, Greg Lamar of Saginaw Future, Amy Sell, and then Riley Hupford of SVSU. I'm going to be back in a minute, but I'm going to have Greg come up and talk about the background.
Hi, my name's Greg Lamar. I'm with Saginaw Future. I'm also a city resident. So very happy to be here today, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I'm just going to give some background about why to have a talent initiative. I'm sure that you've read articles or you've seen news reports about aging Michigan, where the population is getting older. And it's not just a problem in Saginaw County, but there's other counties and areas that are also losing population. And there was a study also done, leaders from East Central Michigan worked with a consulting firm to create a strategy or an economic development plan for the eight-county region. That's, well, Stephen mentioned the region too. And their goals are to, you know, of course, accelerate the economic success and maximize potential. But one of the biggest challenges is a dwindling, non-diverse workforce. So that's the problem that we've all heard about, and now it's also very much shown in the study that was completed. So, we have a declining population with fewer households with children and fewer people within that prime working age. The region and Michigan's population are older than the United States. We're aging faster than the rest of the state or the nation. And we're also, the region itself is a net exporter of jobs. So the number of residents who work outside the region exceeds the number of non-residents who work in the region by over 6,000 people. So it's a significant number. So that's the challenge. That's the bad news. But what's the good news that this study revealed too is that we have numerous strengths, and a lot of these things you're all aware of, and so are we. But the study also pointed out that we have a low cost of living, strong downtown districts. We just heard about a great initiative that focuses on that. Urban revitalization yielding positive results. It's a good place to raise a family. Diversity of living options, urban, suburban, rural, so you have lots of choices, which is very popular with folks, even though the young professionals now do like the urban area. Wide range of options for outdoor recreation, major companies that support community development, and then relatively large population when you combine all the eight counties. So, that's the good with the bad, and Riley will be up. And I also have some flyers.
Right to the clerk, please.
Okay, thank you, Greg. I'd like to go back and talk about the history again. About this time last year, we looked for a consultant to help us. It was another study. We looked at a consultant that, as our first step with funds from the MEDC, to look at in-state and out-state consulting firms. And what we found and learned was that Amy Sell of Amy Sell Talent was our best fit. She was formerly with Ann Arbor Spark, which is a counterpart of Saginaw Future for the Ann Arbor Economic Development. She later ended up working at the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, leading the state's talents efforts. Couple of things was the Michigan promotion. Some may remember that was from several years ago to bring folks back. More recently was the, I can't get my glasses back on, the Michigan, Pure Michigan Opportunity. She's also responsible, if you will, for starting the MyTalent.org website, which we all hear about from Michigan Works and other organizations. So we requested that she identify peer communities doing creative work in talent retention and attraction. Come up with best practices and give us a report to see what we could do and help implement. So there was a couple of best practices, more than a couple, but a couple I'll highlight. One's in our own state called Hello West Michigan, great website over in the southwest corner of the state, Grand Rapids, Sagatuck, that area. And they do a great, they do a really great job of connecting talent with their member companies to ensure that the prospective employees and trailing spouses find the right place to work. One that she identified outside of our area was called Bellknap County, New Hampshire. It's located two hours north of Boston. They've suffered a decline in manufacturing opportunity over the years, and they have a young professional initiative that through a strong social media presence pushes information out to relevant, relevant information out to young workers and entrepreneurs in the community to generate positive word of mouth about the career-building opportunities in the region. It was identified as a really great talent retention technique. Another best practice, again, was in our own state. St. Clair County has a student initiative where they recognize the need to retain their homegrown talent, and they focus primarily on high school and college students. They even, you know, with the internships and so forth. They also started a coming-home reverse scholarship, which was funded by their community foundation leaders. It has recent and college graduates that have student debt that have left the area, and if they would consider moving back, if they completed, if they have a degree in one of the STEM areas, they will pay off their student loan. Right now, we're in what we're calling Phase Two. So she came up with a report, and now she gave us ideas and things to implement. So we engaged SVSU's Cardinal Solutions team, and then we also hired an MBA student who's sitting here, who'll be up in a second. He is a part-time employee at both Saginaw Valley and Saginaw Future. But we are engaging him to work under a one-year assignment with the Cardinal team, Amy Sell, ourselves, to help develop an alumni database, do social media outreach, and coordinate this coming-home event, which I'll have him now come up and talk about. Oh, wait a second, Riley. I'm sorry I screwed up. This here, I wanted to talk about project outcomes. The very first outcome we want, of course, is a good website. This is our website. It's actually www.discovergreatlakesbay.com. So we have to have a good website that we can use to put employer opportunities on it. And that was one of our main project outcomes that we are still, it's still under construction. We're not saying it's under construction because it's populated very well right now, but it is still under construction. I'm going to have Riley come up now. He's going to talk about the digital and social media campaign, our Facebook. But just to give you an idea, our coming-home event, that's on November 21st. A lot of the areas around the state are doing a coming-home event. They purposely do it the night before Thanksgiving. A lot of our millennials, that's the biggest bar night for them, and they come home. They like to go out. We're even letting them bring a guest if they like, so they come. And maybe that guest will, you know, stay in the area or come back as well. We, as of last week, we had 26 employers registered. Our goal was 20 to 30. We weren't sure. It's very targeted. And we currently have 59 since we sent this slide in of registrants. Can everybody get out their phones? No, I'm just kidding. And go to our Facebook page and like it. But we are really encouraging everybody to go to our Facebook page. We also have a great, you know, Discover Great Lakes Bay website. Besides the website, we have a Facebook page that we'd like you to like and share with your family and friends. And I know I'm getting ahead of myself, but finally I'll have, I'm trying to be quick here. I'm going to have Riley come up and finish it off.
Good evening, everyone.
Good.
My name is Riley Hupford, and as Steve mentioned, I work as the Assistant Director in SVSU's Center for Community Engagement and also as a program coordinator for the Discover Great Lakes Bay Initiative. So thank you for having us tonight. I'll try to make this brief. So we've had a lot of partnerships with this initiative. Again, we're always looking for more as this moves forward. But we've worked really well with all the employers who are attending and some who aren't able to attend it. We hope that there will be more events in the future for employers to be there and talk to job seekers. Education representatives, chamber representatives have really helped to promote this initiative to their membership. And then the alumni, which has been a big partnership for us. So with all seven colleges and universities in the region, we've been partnering to have outreach specific to our event and to this initiative about employment opportunities to alumni and upcoming graduates. So we're again looking forward to that event. And then young professional networks, who will hopefully be in attendance at the event and have also really been great in supporting this. And of course, as Steve mentioned, the economic development organizations. So the digital marketing campaign, I won't make you get out your phones, but we are on Facebook, Instagram, and LinkedIn. So we would very much appreciate you following along with us and sharing these opportunities. These are just a few examples. We really focus on highlighting the region, fun things to do, arts and culture, places to go and eat. But a lot of our promotions right now are focusing on the coming-home event, which will be November 21st at Saginaw Valley State University in the banquet rooms. And that will be from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. You see the word "free" bolded on there, so free food, free drinks, but also a great opportunity for job seekers to meet with employers who are hiring for career-ready positions. So we've been working with, again, all the colleges and universities. We look forward to their attendance as well and to a great event. But this will also feature a video project that the Cardinal Solutions team has been working on. So they did testimonial pieces with four young professionals living and working in the region. So that will be up on the website following the event, but there's some drone footage of the region, really trying to highlight that this is a great place to live and work, and that's what the event is focusing on. Again, it's free, free food and drinks. It's a great opportunity. We hope that you will join us and that you will encourage job seekers to join us as well. And those are our links there, and at this time, that is all we have.
Council members, any questions? Councilwoman Brenda Moore?
Don't say it like that, but I have a question. I know that you said that you're networking with the Cardinals, SVSU. Is Delta College and the other surrounding junior colleges involved as well?
Correct. Correct. We have seven of them that we're partnering with, and Delta, Davenport, and the four-year universities, Northwood, SVSU, CMU, I'm going to miss somebody, Elm. So we're partnering with all of them. They are helping us push this message out to their alumni. The alumni databases are, probably, you know, pretty encouraged.
So they're really working with just the database?
Yeah.
They're not working directly with you?
Correct. They are pushing our messages.
Okay, they're pushing it, but they're pushing it out to their alumni?
Correct. They can't share their alumni databases with us.
John, do you have a question?
Yes, something that was mentioned in here, I wondered if one or of you could describe a little more the Cardinal Solutions team. What do you think about that?
Yeah, so Steve mentioned that's an interdisciplinary team, so that means that students from business, sometimes from geography, so for the drone footage that we did for the videos, they go and do that. There's art, graphic design, and the logo was developed by the students. So they all come together, they meet on Fridays, and they work on projects. They have a pretty big load right now, but they're always willing to take in new project ideas. But yeah, it's professors and student groups, so about four to five professors right now, and then two to three students depending on the major.
And what's great about it, working with the students, they're the group we're trying to hit. So they're coming up with the ideas for the website, a lot of the technical writing, the logo, they came up with the logo, if you've noticed that. It's really a heart within a heart if you turn it, trying to get a region. It's the small heart is the best, Aronak, Gladwin, and so forth. But, you know, just a great team.
Thank you. Thank you. You're working mostly with employers and hoping to get alumni, those who might be coming back or who are already here. You have a large number of governmental agencies. Are you seeking the government agencies to come and talk about their communities? It seems to me that would be an opportunity as well.
Actually, we're, it was set up to be more of a job fair.
Which I gather that, but employers, communities are large employers as well. And we have, we're always seeking firemen and police applicants, and I'm sure other agencies are as well. To me, those are great jobs, and it might be something you need to think about.
Certainly. There's still time for the employer offices.
Well, yeah, you got to be telling.
We're trying to hit 30. We're at 26, so there's still time if anyone wants to sign up.
That would be an opportunity, it seems to me.
Other unique aspects to this initiative is that we've identified these regional employers, and they have specific jobs that they're trying to fill. And they provided us with that information, and we in turn then communicated to the potential people applying for the jobs. And when they, they're able to check those out, and then if it fits their career path, they not only RSVP, but they upload their resume. So we're really trying to link those people so that improved opportunity to them to be here is as much as possible.
Very nice.
So I need to ask, the age, the age, I see, did I see, y'all talked about young people?
It's more people who want to come back home too.
But what's the age?
We're looking at, I mean, they define a millennial group as either side of 18 to 35 roughly. It's considered the millennial group.
So?
Those that are just getting into college, recent graduates, most of them have gone all the way up to 15. So that kind of group is considered the most mobile before they really put down their roots.
So I have another question. I know that you're saying you're working with SVSU. But we've got young people coming home from college who are not in those schools that you named. If they came home and seen what you were doing, could they take part in this activity on the?
That's why we're asking everybody to like, we were asking everybody to like the page, share the page. We're getting the chambers and families, share, share it, push it out, have them contact us. We got to be good, help them get registered.
Yeah, I've got some nieces and nephews I want to bring back to Saginaw.
That's what we want.
From the universities out of Iowa. Okay. Yeah, I need to bring them home.
I'm sharing it with my friends, son's friend, my own son. So it's, and I've asked them to share it with their friends, which they are, so it's open.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Jamie, what, Jamie?
Are our young-ish unofficial welcoming committee members invited that are uber-involved? Are those folks invited to this?
Yes, absolutely.
We're asking the young professional members from the chambers of commerce to kind of be like ambassadors.
Is there, is there registration process for those? Does it have numbers?
Just the regular attendee registration.
Okay, thank you.
So please, yes, sign up tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Everybody that comes, they can get free drinks and free apps as well. It's not just the registration. Everybody, including employers, to mingle and make it a mixer versus a stiff job, you know, a stiff job fair.
That's also what I identified is what millennials like too. They like the mixer as opposed to the more structured type of.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark, go ahead.
You didn't mention the kinds of employers, and I think that might be important. The tech industry is certainly one of the biggest attractions for the millennial age group. Are there going to be some tech companies there that you can highlight as a possible? I mean, some of the people that I know have moved out specifically because the tech companies are elsewhere, not here. And I know we have some, but is that something?
Our speakers with Digital Midland, I don't know if you know Jeff, so he's also looking for three people right now. So, he'd be one of those. A lot of our companies, even though you don't think of us as tech, I tell people, places like Nexteer is high-tech. Your automobile is the most high-tech banking computer you could have, and it's the computer in your car. They look for electronic engineers and all those technical engineers with skills like that. So, a lot of our big employers like Dow, Upan, Nexteer, they're gonna be there looking for those types of positions.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you so much. Thank you so much for all your work. Madam Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, we're still going.
Because I know you're still, you're still there, I'm sorry. It's been a while. Go ahead.
So, thank you to the gentlemen for the presentation. And just a few other items to update council. Saginaw Future does a lot of other things, and I think beyond their initial mission as well. And this last week at the Saginaw Future meeting, they did have Senator Peters attend that meeting. So, it was a good opportunity for board members to communicate with him directly. And I believe that Tom Miller took him downtown for a tour as well. So, he got to see some of the stuff downtown. And I asked specific questions about federal funding for infrastructure in our urban core. So, hopefully, that's something that we can work on more as we progress with our projects Also, we are nearing the completion of our audit for the year ending 6/30/18. And I believe this is one of the fastest turnarounds we've had. So, I would congratulate Fiscal Services Department, Plant, Moran, and Yo-Yo for getting that done. We are planning, I believe, to have the presentation of the audit in the first meeting in December. A number of you went on the tour for the Saginaw Midland Water Supply Corporation. Since Saginaw is one of the owners of the corporation, I wanted to let council know that the director is leaving. Mike Quinell is leaving after 15 years of service. So, I congratulate him and wish him good luck and his next endeavor. The board is in the process of posting that position and working with a search firm to fill it. So, we expect it probably at the beginning of, back next year, to be filled with a new member. So, hopefully, we can get council members out there to welcome that individual when the time comes. Chief has sent out the selection for the October Police Officer of the Month, or November Police Officer of the Month is Sergeant Kelly Schmidt. Sergeant Schmidt has been nominated by her peers for positive, encouraging leadership style and for maintaining a productive, energetic, and enthusiastic shift. She does not hesitate to accept calls when her officers are busy, effectively leading through example. So, congratulations to Sergeant Schmidt. Finally, I wanted to let council members and the public know that the contractor crews will be working on the Ajibway Island project that was approved. I think at the last meeting, $600,000 project. They'll begin work, and that's going to result in the park being closed to vehicular traffic from sunset to sunrise on weekdays. Got that notice from Public Services, but I think the park is closed after sunset anyway. So, it shouldn't have any impact on the people's use of the park. But there will be construction there, so there will be equipment. So, if you know people are visiting the park, make sure that they take care and avoid the work areas with that. That concludes the management update.
Thank you. Any questions for the manager on his update? All right, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at the consent agenda.
And the agenda's been available at City Hall, on the city's website, and on SGTV, Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
Support.
They moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
My next order of business is boards commission committee reports.
And council members, are there any verbal reports that you would like to give from your boards or commissions other than those that are printed? Being none, Madam Clerk.
Our next business is appointment of board commission committee members. Our first one is to approve the mayoral appointment of Brian Lekel to the Riverfront Development Commission with a term to expire April 1st of 2023.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Support.
No any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next appointment is to approve the city manager's appointment of Brian Weiss to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority with a term to expire December 31st of 2021.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next order of business is resolutions. We have one, is objecting to the transfer of tax-reverted properties from Saginaw County.
And we need a motion to the objecting of the transfer of tax-reverted properties from the Saginaw County.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, you are now at miscellaneous business.
Is there any unfinished or miscellaneous business become for this council?
There is.
Okay.
We...
Where we going?
I have a motion.
Okay, you have a motion?
Wait, man.
I have a motion. Yes. We have a piece of business yet, resolution for the MDOT agreement.
That was taken care of on number 12.
That was part of the 12.
That was part of your, we've already voted on it.
Yeah.
That was added to the agenda, and it was number 12.
I thought it was added to be a resolution. This was just a communication. Am I wrong?
And then you were adopting the resolution under CC-12.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was coming separate.
Do I change a vote?
None, okay, not at all.
Okay. Council, Councilwoman Clark, you have some...
I have a motion that I would think is very appropriate, and it's to recognize Councilman John Humphries for his commitment to the community and his service as a member of the Saginaw City.
Yes.
Is there a second?
No, second is...
Seconded?
In those time...
Is there any further discussion? Because there is a motion we have to vote on it.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Now, as part of that, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. No.
Okay.
You're just leaving.
Go ahead.
This is for John.
This is on my side, okay.
Whereas, the Saginaw City Council is proud to recognize John Humphries for his commitment and dedication to the city of Saginaw. John was elected to city council in 2016 and has faithfully served the citizens of Saginaw, providing guidance and assistance on several key initiatives throughout our community. And whereas Councilman Humphries has served as the former chair and is currently a member on the Riverfront Development Commission on the city's Mission, Vision, and Core Values subcommittees, and John's work on this subcommittee ensured that the city's mission and vision statements and core values provide a sound and workable approach to achieve the future we envision for Saginaw. And whereas Councilman Humphries is a truly dedicated leader, serving on the Saginaw County Bar Association, the Saginaw County Bar Association's Pro Bono Committee, the Saginaw Promise Zone, and the Home Builders Association of Saginaw, just to name a few. John received the 2011 Saginaw County Bar Association Community Service Award, and for multiple years, he has been a Saginaw Pro Bono Attorney Gold Club member. That means he has done more than 30 hours of service in pro bono each year. Whereas Councilman Humphries is a man committed to giving back to others in the community, John remains interested and involved in the Adams Boulevard Neighborhood Association and is often found volunteering at the Eastside Soup Kitchen and the Saginaw Covenant Academy. And whereas John Humphries has set the example for others as an exemplary council member and citizen whose enthusiasm and dedication have helped to improve the quality of life for many in the city of Saginaw, we give honor and recognition this day for the deep commitment of John Humphries to assist, edify, and encourage others. Now therefore be it resolved, the members of the Saginaw City Council, to hereby extend this expression of our appreciation and gratitude to Mr. John Humphries for serving as a member of the Saginaw City Council and for the positive impact he has made in our community. We extend our very best wishes for continued success in all of his future endeavors. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Councilperson Floyd Clark, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael DeBalls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Forbes, John Millen, and Brenda F. Moore, as well as Timothy Morales, City Manager. John, please come over here. It's my honor to represent. We appreciate your service. Well, there's nothing else, right?
Well, you need to know...
No, no, we have one more.
You need to know them.
We're not adjourned yet.
Before someone...
Wait, 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 wait. Let John talk.
Before someone? Okay, go ahead.
You can't give a lawyer a proclamation and then not let him say it.
Okay, yes, we would like you to...
Well, you know, I was appointed to this seat to fill in for Larry Kolorus, who had resigned for health reasons and sadly passed away shortly thereafter. And it was one of those situations where it was just too good of an opportunity to pass up. I'd always wanted to be a city council member. And I had been told to be careful what you wish for, because I was selected and immediately threw myself into it. Loved every moment of it and highly recommend that people get involved in city government, whether it is as an elected official or serving on a commission or a committee or a board, because it is very rewarding. You work with good people. Unfortunately, it takes a little bit of time. You've got to be committed. If you're going to do this job right, you're going to do it with commitment. And I unfortunately picked up some additional responsibilities over the course of the last year, which ate into my time. And that is why I didn't put my name in and I did not run again. It had nothing to do with the job itself, the work itself. As I said, I thoroughly enjoyed it. And so, I'm going to miss it. I'm going to miss it very much. I'm going to miss working with these people. I'd say I'd miss working with Dennis, but Dennis is leaving, too. And I want to tell each and every one of you that's here that I've enjoyed working with you, and it has been an honor and it has been a pleasure, and I think frankly, it's been a privilege. I believe those of you that are up for reelection will probably be elected, and I think that's wonderful. We have a few write-in candidates, and we look forward to finding out tomorrow evening sometime what the fully constituted council will be. But I leave knowing it is in good hands. The city is in good hands. We have good administration, Mr. Morales, good legal counsel and guidance. We've got a tremendous clerk. Yolanda, I cannot believe what you do fiscally around here. I'm not going to go through the room, but I could name each of the chiefs and the various department heads. This city is being well-run. It's challenged, certainly it's challenged, but this city is being well-run. So, I say goodbye. I'll see you later. And I don't rule out the possibility of sometime in the future putting my name back into the ring, because I really did enjoy it.
Good.
I really did.
Thank you.
Thank you, all of you. Thank you very much.
Business to come before...
Well, for us, there really is.
Yes, yes. Why you with such hurry?
I'm just...
Yes, yes.
All right, there is one more item, and this is an item, again, I have the honor of making a motion to recognize Mayor Dennis Browning for his years of dedicated service as council member, Mayor Pro Tem, and the mayor of the city of Saginaw, each position conducted with professionalism and integrity. So, may I have a second?
We have a motion on the floor.
Some support.
Supported.
They moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? I guess being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Now, as part of that, it's your turn to stand up.
Okay.
All right. This is something I think all the council members will be very happy to be able to present to you. It reads, "In grateful appreciation, the honorable Dennis V. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, for your dedication and service, November 12th, 2013 to November 5th, 2018." Congratulations, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. I'm gonna sit down, we're gonna talk a little bit. Well, thank you very much. I thought I was looking forward to this day. And I, this has been quite a journey. It's my 49th year of being with the city of Saginaw, and I've enjoyed it. It's had its challenges, but I've enjoyed it and certainly appreciate sitting at this table with the people here we have. People ask me, you know, Dan, been there a long time. What's one of your greatest accomplishments? What have you done? And my answer is, I haven't done anything, but the nine of us have. And I think that's the message, is this is a council that works together. We work together. Oh, we have our discussions. But we work together, and I am so proud of this council and what we've done in the past. And probably one of my, one of the things that I'm most proud of is the gentleman over to my right there, sitting at the manager's spot, Mr. Morales. Our decision to move him into the manager's position has been one of just a tremendous growth for our city. And Tim, I want to thank you so much for what you are accomplishing, but I know that you're only as good as those people that you have chosen as your department heads and people that work under that. And again, to the department heads, thank you so much. It's been, been very good. But it's time. It's time, and I'm looking forward to a new chapter, and we'll do good. So, I know this is last minute, but for the city council members, staff, this afternoon, and let me take just a second, I want to introduce my wife, Suzie. Would you stand up? And this is my high school sweetheart, and been with me 49 years, the same as I've been with this city. And then my beautiful daughter, Sarah, is here, representing my other two children. And so, I want to thank them. So, this afternoon, Suzie and I said, are you going to stop afterwards for anything? And so, for city council members, city staff, I am going down to the farmer's market when this is over to the new place for Tom Miller. And it is open, and if you have a chance, I know you guys are busy with families. If you get a chance, please stop down after our council meeting. We're going to head down there as quick as we can, just to kind of informally say that. So, if you get a chance, I'd love to have you stop down. But it's been a real pleasure and an honor to sit here at the table with you, to work with you on this, and with the citizens of Saginaw. Not going anywhere. I'm staying here in the city. We're not putting our house up for sale. We love our city. We love our neighborhood, and I hope our paths will cross many more times in the future. So, with that, thank you very much.
With that, we're going to let them hit it one more time.
I cannot strike the gavel until I get a motion. We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? There is a support. Is there any discussion on the motion to adjourn? There is a support, is there any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Being none, we're adjourned. Thank you.